And if you have not already done so, you need to go online on our website and look for the information on the personal learning plans. They address many of the questions that came up today, parent engagement, how do we bring parents back into the conversation in high school? That came up this morning. How do we ensure that we're all grappling with this challenge of providing meaningful, relevant experiences that are flexible, building off your work around Act 77 and flexible pathways, so that every child in the state is challenged to meet high standards, but is doing so in a personalized way. So I really give them a hand because Deb and Chris have been so powerful. And that said, what we're going to do today is we're going to give you sort of a whirlwind tour of how the agency is trying to respond to the challenge that was put in our hands by the State Board of Education. And this is a really good opportunity to think about our roles together. The governors asked us to look at what an accountability model would look like that would meet the needs of Vermont's children and our goals for our kids. And in doing that work, we're building from the tremendous policy work that the board did around goals for children and some of the enabling structures in the EQS. So I think our challenge as a team has been to take these pieces, these disparate pieces, and try to pull them together in a coherent way that makes sense for the kids of Vermont. So just to give you a little context on our starting points, one of the emerging goals, just to keep in mind, that our purpose in all this work is not to just measure how good our students are, because we know they're amazing, but how to focus on the really hard and much more important work of improving student, for improving learning for every student in every classroom. Our job isn't just how are we doing, it's how do we get better for every child? And that's, that's the goal that shapes our work. So the policy impetus for our work around a model accountability model comes from, first of all, your priorities. And if you think about the priorities the board set for itself, the first five are really addressed in the context of an accountability plan. If we're trying to do good work for the kids of Vermont, how would we know if we're successful? Well, we would see a reduction in the achievement gap. We'd probably also see a reduction in the opportunity gap. We'd begin and develop and begin implementation of a balanced assessment model. That's it. Comes right out of your plan, your priorities. We're going to come up with a model that captures evidence across the broad spectrum of things we care about. We're going to promote student voice. Go look at the PLPs. Again, that's another plug for them. We're going to develop a model that reflects our commitment to personalization and student voice and learning. Can't do this without enhancing school leadership. I would argue you also can't do this without enhancing supervisory leadership as well at the SU level and superintendents. So at some point, we need to begin to think about what is it the critical value that superintendents add, what is the critical value principals add, and how do we build those capacities so that they can support the work teachers are doing to improve learning and teaching? And then obviously, support school and teaching improvement. Six will come up as well, because we will need your help in thinking about how to communicate, both hearing from people and also giving information back to people around accountability. Other policy, just to situate you again in the work, coming out of the education quality standards. Again, remind ourselves that there was a strong commitment in the EQS to personalization for each student. Flexible pathways. We need to figure out how to develop a system that maintains the same high rigorous goals for all students, but acknowledge the fact that they have to be allowed to demonstrate proficiency through multiple ways, through multiple pathways. So both we're going to have diversity of ways to get there, but also diversity of ways to demonstrate your proficiency. And the word proficiency is key, because that's not something that's necessarily captured in some of the assessments that are currently in place. And Chris will address that in a bit. And then curriculum content. When we think about what we currently use to evaluate schools, we look at standardized tests primarily in English, language arts, and math, and also to some extent, science. But when you look at the goals for the board and for our, the goals the board has for our students, we have seven goals. It's a much broader range of measures, and many of them aren't even measured or captured at all on our standardized test. So the model we're using to evaluate schools doesn't even capture half of what we care about. That's a problem. And particularly, if you think about the last category, for those of you who were involved in the meetings last week, this whole notion of transferable skills. I think many people in the room know that not everyone does well in school or does well on tests, but that doesn't mean that they're not highly effective, you know, in careers. So in thinking about those other skills that really bring power to the work, we don't have a way of assessing our work on that yet. And then the pragmatic impulse, impetus, you know, we mentioned this this morning, but this discrepancy. We know that all our schools will now be failing, but at the same time, you know, we're supposed to be scoring high internationally. So this isn't helpful to us, and the measures that we're using aren't really telling us the story we need. So we need to develop a better model that's going to give us the data. And I added the quote at the bottom, because the issue that's going to come up again and again in these conversations is, well, is this reliable and is this valid? When you think back, those of you who've been here for a long time, to the portfolios that we used to use, the research was very clear that that improved learning, but it fell down on reliability. Well, the paradox is that we also know that maybe some of these standardized measures aren't so, they're telling us, maybe there are issues around validity there too, in terms of what they measure. And certainly, in order to move forward with the federal government, we need to be looking at growth models for individual teachers based on their student scores. And what we're seeing in-house is that those aren't even reliable for our population because of our small classes. So I think what we know is all the measures are, are not reliable. They all have issues and challenges. So that our holy grail can't be the perfect measure. We're not going to get the perfect measure. So what we need to do is shift our attention to multiple fallible indicators. We have to acknowledge that performance-based assessments have limitations, just as standardized tests do, but we need to use multiple measures to get the true story and then use professional judgment. So here, I think I went through this, so I can go quickly, but you can see the current tests that are coming out. The new smarter balance will primarily address A and B. C is going to be the next generation science test, but we don't get everything we need. So the question that we're going to try to address today, and hopefully in the work session, is if this is our work, how do we know we're successful? And what we've been doing in-house, and we've been meeting with measurement experts and different people at different universities and trying to talk to some of the stakeholders, is trying to come up with a vision. If we're not using just smarter balance and not using those standardized tests only to evaluate schools, what are some of the options that are out there? And what the group is going to do today is try to float a proposed model, just to get some input from the State Board of Education, whether this reflects both the goals of the EQS and your board priorities, and just to try on these components and see if these really capture some of what we care about for our kids. And so what we're going to do is go through each of these models. This is, this is a map or an outline for a multi-measure approach. It would include performance assessments, which builds on tremendous work being done in the field, and Deb and Chris will speak to that. So build on our existing capacities and strengths. It will include the SBAK and the next generation science standards. That's required by federal policy unless we want to give up all the federal funds. But we can put them in the context of these other measures so that they're not the only measure and that there's, there's other options. Surveys of teachers, parents, and students, speaking to that whole issue of voice. Are we engaging our parents and students in these conversations about what effective teaching is and how effectively we're doing it? And then finally, standards-based evaluations of educational quality, which come out of the work that Marta Camera has been facilitating when she's been working with the Teacher Effectiveness Task Force. And we'll address that, there's a time later in the agenda today, where I'll be able to share the results of Marta's group as well, so you can see how that piece fits in. And then the foundation of this all is the opportunities to learn, which I think Phil Mathis spoke to eloquently this morning as well. It's not enough just to say, this is how our students are doing, this is how we help them get better. But what we do, we do have to ask these questions about what are the opportunities we're providing? And someone mentioned this morning, extended day and extended year options. If that's what it takes, can we compare across districts and see are some schools providing those, others not? So we need to have some way to capture some data on the breadth and depth of offerings that schools are providing for their students, particularly if you want to close the achievement gap. So.
Yeah, sounds good. So I'm going to talk very briefly about the performance assessment component of the system. Performance assessments to start with, if people aren't familiar with that as a term. If you're looking at performance assessments as a comparison to like Scantron bubble sheet assessments, the other kinds of assessments that we're not going to get into today are the ones where students are presented with a list of options. They pick one of the options. That's the framework for the assessment. Performance assessments are assessments where students are asked to demonstrate their knowledge in some way, through some kind of a performance test. So that can include like an essay prompt, it could be a lab, it could be a portfolio, anything where students are asked to demonstrate their knowledge in a more meaningful way. So those are seen as being a nice supplement to standardized testing, because they give you a different window into students' knowledge and to their, their understanding. Going back to the slide that Rebecca presented earlier, you can see the SBAK and the next-gen science standards. They test a portion of the first three here, the lit, the math, and the science. But I think there's an argument to be made that even the SBAK and the NGSS assessments don't really get at the full spectrum of what we want to know about students' understanding types of these first three. And then it takes other performance measures to get a better sense of where they are, what they need, what teachers need to teach more effectively, what we need to do as an agency to provide support for the field. So that's where performance assessments can help to fill some of those gaps. So that's part of thinking around including performance assessments as a part of the model. You'll notice here that we're talking about a combination of state and locally developed tools. So we're trying to find that sweet spot of like, how much you come from the state, how much you be locally developed, what to standardize, what to leave up to the, the schools and districts to come up with for themselves. We're talking initially at this point, we're talking about tools that we're sharing about maybe defining performance assessments a little bit more clearly, providing some examples of what they can look like and how they can be used effectively. And also, looking at each of these A through G categories as places to draw proficiencies out of for learning. So what, what does it mean to be a global citizen? How do we want to test that and assess that? When we're talking about FIZED and health, like what are proficiencies that we want students to reach as a part of learning about those things, we're experiencing those things? So the proficiencies that we draw from that, we're also looking at how they can be assessed and how those proficiencies can be represented in some of the other initiatives that, that we have in place, including personalized learning plans, which is one of the new things that, that was kind of hit a major milestone yesterday. So I guess to talk a little bit more about proficiencies representation in PLBs, yeah, Debbie, please.
What was the milestone yesterday?
Yes. So Act 77 asked for the posting of resources and tools related to the implementation of PLP to be posted by January 20th. And I, you know, I really need to acknowledge the work of Travis Van Alstine, who actually had us up Sunday night. So the, the email went out to the members of the PLP work group, I think it was around 10 o'clock, but I believe the site was up probably around eight, but I didn't check it until 10. So that was, that was one of the, it was a huge milestone. And actually, Julie Longchamp is one of the members of the, the PLP work group. So what you're just seeing here is just an excerpt from the PLP personalized learning plan, critical components. And it specifically, this one was chosen specifically because it aligns with the performance assessment work that needs to be happening. And it also is based on what are those multiple pathways that, that we're going to provide opportunities for, for students to be able to participate in in order to meet the criteria and standards that we establish for them. The way that this piece is broken down, and I will put a plug in for the PLP website, is that there is a full PLP template that is there. There is also a high school sample that's represented. And this full document right here is a tool that can be used by schools to see, are they close? Or is there a gap between what it is they're currently doing in personalization based on the critical components? So the first part is really about what are those common student learning expectations that high schools have established? And so those will pretty much be very similar, depending what grade that you're in, for a student. And then what the, the student speaks to is, what are the action steps? How is it that I'm going to get to that place? And that's where it is that you're looking at work-based learning, you're working at, looking at CTE. You might be looking at doing enrollment courses, early college programs, all those pieces, virtual and blended learning, that are all part of the flexible pathways legislation. And then the piece that we're looking forward to is, what are those demonstrations? How are they going to show that, that they met the expectations that have been required of them? So that in a nutshell is the piece that we're looking at when Chris is talking about that sweet spot. What are those things that we know they're going to be occurring in schools that is going to give us more information to talk about exactly the growth that's happening there?
Thank you. And this, I think, gets back to the point that I was making earlier. This chart is supposed to describe the range of options that you have when you're talking about standardization versus local control. And I think that this slide, I think, is in the context of how much to standardize versus leave to locals. When you're talking about communicating what a good performance assessment looks like, how they should be constructed, how they should be assessed, et cetera. I think this is the same conversation that we're having when we're talking about proficiency too, proficiency-based learning. How much do we standardize when we talk about identifying proficiencies and, and goals for learning? Do we leave room for the field to kind of tease out proficiencies for themselves under some, some categories of desired proficiencies? So these are where our conversations are sitting right now. And as Debbie was talking about, and I think as I mentioned earlier, the whole idea of finding a sweet spot between standardization and local control is the goal. If we're talking about standardizing everything across the board at the state level, it gives us consistency, but it doesn't give us the flexibility that we know that, that a lot of schools and districts can really benefit from, and also that, that students can benefit from. The whole point of this is to design a system that really benefits kids. It's hard to do one that's standardized for the entire state that also meets the need of every child in the state. But when you're talking about something that's completely designed at the local level, it makes it hard for us to assess and compare groups and figure out what's working and what isn't working. You know, if Essex is doing something completely different from, from Rattleboro, say, like, what does that look like at the state level? Or even like regionally, if you're looking at talking about improving systems and framing conversations. So we're trying to find something in the middle that gives us like a valid, reliable place to talk about when you're looking at data, but also gives us consistency and the ability to compare results and systems across groups. So this is kind of where we are right now. We're hoping to land somewhere here. And I guess it for the proficiency piece, so. A little bit about it, I guess. So I guess I can intro the idea of standardized tests being a part of the conversation. I think what we're looking at, and I don't want to misrepresent this, but I think that we're looking at framing the role of standardized testing in a little bit of a more narrow way. Talking about standardized testing as a valuable part of the process and as providing some valuable indicators for us when we're talking about assessments. But that we need to think about what they can do specifically as a part of a larger framework. The piece that I wanted to head, I think we were talking about this before. When I was coming from, the position I had in the agency before, this was in school improvement. And a lot of the work that I did was going out to the field and talking with schools about their work and how we could support them in improving and going in whatever direction they, they felt like they needed to go in. A lot of times, the conversation was framed by kneecap scores, and that's kind of where we began and end the conversation, knowing that there were a lot of other nuances to their work that wasn't really captured by, by that, that, that assessment model. So I think looking at a multi-tiered kind of framework for assessing school performances would be really beneficial to people that are going out to the field and having conversations with schools. It would give us a completely different perspective on their work. It would give us, I think, the justification to be able to go in and say, like, let's not just talk about kneecap scores. Let's talk about what these other measures of performance do and get to a deeper understanding about what's going on in your school. It's hard to do that when you're going with just, you know, you're armed with kneecaps and that's it. It's hard to kind of like have that, that deeper conversation that everybody wants to have. People at the state level want to have it. People at the school level want to have it. I think this framework will, will help to get us there.
I think a key thing just to call out is on the state level uses. It says that one possible use is to trigger for more detailed evaluation of schools. And this differs from how we've used it in that we're not saying just because your scores are low that you're a bad school. What we're going to look at is, is sort of progress in patterns and use it to, to ask questions. We do see schools across the state where we've seen a consistent decline in scores. You might want to ask why, but there might be other factors that you need to weigh in making a professional judgment about what's actually going on in that place. So trying to de-emphasize that sort of consequential feel. Obviously, we still have to satisfy all federal reporting guidelines, or else we lose access to all the federal money as well. So keep that in mind. Another piece we wanted to include in this was surveys of teachers, parents, and students. It's really interesting, actually, in districts that have looked, have been implementing surveys and have actually looked at the relationship between survey responses and student learning. Surveys actually do a pretty good job, and I think there's been a lot of concern about kids sort of being irresponsible, but they actually, you know, and I've worked in several districts where we've done surveys, and actually, it really just sort of takes the conversation up a level. I, you know, I think it's easy to be afraid of it, and you do need to mediate survey use, again, through professional judgment. But students are very, can be very specific and can provide very useful feedback. And the scores on, the survey results are actually, have a more, a stronger correlation with student learning than do things like teacher observations. It's just something to think about, keeping in mind. Students actually can give very valuable feedback. So the other advantage of surveys is it allows us to maybe go after some of those other critical outcomes that are so important to us. So the Chicago Center for School Research, for example, has been experimenting with survey measures that look at this whole skill set around metacognition and learning how to learn. And you can ask kids, and this is an example of one of theirs, questions like study habits. This, this, this one right here, number four, I quiz myself on the material to prepare for a test. If you read the literature on memory and learning, that's actually one of the skills that they target as one of the most effective ways to prepare and memorize information. So what you can do is actually ask questions that go after some of the skills that we know are effective, just to see, have students report on frequency or whether those capacities are being developed. So it's just a different way to come at some of the things we care about. Surveys of teachers could also go after some of the issues around school climate, which might help contextualize some of the other indicators that you're getting when you, when you look at that school. It gives you contextual data that helps you make sense of the measures and the data that you're getting from other measures. And then the last piece, red is a dark, unfortunate color, I'm sorry, but is standard-based evaluations of educator quality. And this, this category really builds on the work of the Teacher Effectiveness Task Force, and we'll come back to that this afternoon. But the AOE, after hearing from the board, convened a team that represented a broad cross-section of stakeholders to sit down and talk about if we were really going to gather information on teachers that they could use to improve their, their practice, what would that look like and how would we know? And what's already been done is that there's some initial work out around teachers, that's completed. And the next steps are to start working with principals and superintendents. So we can talk about if we're part of a system that's focused on continuous improvement of learning, what are each of these actors going to do in that system and how will we know if they're doing it? With respect to teachers, just to put out, because I think this really came out of the task force report, and it's certainly echoed in the research literature. Evaluation systems have two purposes. One is to assess how effectively teachers are doing the job. But I want to call your attention to the second one, which is to provide valuable information to drive professional learning and improve teacher effectiveness. And that's often descriptive. And I think this afternoon, we talked about the work of the task force. What they've put in place, or what they're recommending, are tools which give you better data, not just on what teachers are doing, but what possible next steps are to improve learning along the way. The primary tools that are being used are teacher value-added models, or growth models, or VANS. If you think back to the history of the state, we declined to apply for a waiver in part because the waiver would have required us to use teacher value-added models for teacher evaluation. Some of the recent research our group has been reading has been suggesting that these measures are highly unreliable, particularly for small classes. One of the studies we looked at throughout every classroom with 15 or fewer students, because they were too unstable over time. That's 40%, 50% of the classrooms in the state. So again, this whole issue of reliability, we need to put it in context. We're being asked by the federal government to use tools that really don't have reliability any better than the performance measures Chris has been talking about. So we need to stop looking for the perfect tool and come up with many tools, and then look at the story that all of those tools tell us together when we're trying to use our professional judgment. Just to, we're keeping moving here. And then the last piece, I just wanted to highlight this one, because this came up again this morning in terms of opportunities to learn. And one of the things we're in preliminary, Bill, don't panic, we're in preliminary discussions around how do you, how can we do some evaluation across the state where we compare the kinds of opportunities students, students have to actually access the learning that we've prescribed and their goals for them? And this is incredibly difficult in the state of Vermont, and I'm sure you've heard this multiple times, but the complexity of our governance system makes it very, very difficult to compare across schools, because we don't know what costs and what initiatives are embedded and at which level in the system. So this is not a conversation that's easy to have. What we are talking about and experimenting with, this is very preliminary, but just experimenting with, is the idea of developing comparison sets of schools that have similar characteristics. And then within them, beginning to look at and gather evidence around what the breadth and depth of offerings are and what are the kinds of opportunities that are available in those systems. Not to give a prescriptive remedy, but perhaps to give school boards better data to make decisions about how they target their resources and how they invest in the learning of children. And then clearly also, surveys might give you some indication around school climate. We know that stress, for example, impairs working memory, which impairs ability to learn. If you could look at school climate measures, that would also give you a different piece of information about what, what learning is like in that context. And then the million-dollar question is, how do you tie this all together? And how does the state play a role? Because you do need that oversight. And how do you make sure that this, the using and use of all these different measures is rigorous and robust in a way that really does advance learning across the state? So one of the models that we've been experimenting with and trying to, doing, reading some of the research literature, but also trying to develop an outline of what it might look like, so that we can then take it out to the community for discussion, is sort of an inspectorate model. What's interesting is there's not a lot of causal research on the effect of these models. What there is, is a lot of research around the elements of some of these models. And we'll, we'll be able to share some of that out in the next few weeks. But basically, to have a site, a site visit by an inspectorate team that would be composed of different actors, including educators, so that sometime in some cycle, you know, maybe every five years, you get a visit. And the group comes to your school, they observe instruction, they look at the different measures, and they sit down, they engage with the school in a discussion, both around the school's self-assessment, but also about the story told by all these measures of learning, and provide very concrete, specific feedback that the school leadership, including leadership teams of teachers, can use to develop and then execute a strategy for acting on those outcomes to get better learning for kids. And some of the components these inspectorate models typically include are self-evaluation by the school prior to the visit, site visits that lead to those reports, development of the local improvement plans, and then as necessary, follow-up visits. And the key thing about these, and what the literature on these inspectors does suggest, is that this is a way to acknowledge explicitly the fact that different schools need different kinds of feedback. That a low, and one of the particular findings that stuck out to us was that schools in very difficult and challenging circumstances need different types of feedback from schools that serve high SES students, and they need to have different priorities. So having a flexible inspectorate model allows us to focus on and prioritize the initiatives and the changes that are going to yield the greatest improvement. Our goal isn't to get everybody to the same bar day one. Our goal is to help find those high leverage issues in every school that they can use to do the most good for the kids in the shortest time period possible. So the questions we'd like you to entertain, and this is, this is a very brief sketch, and if you're exhausted now, I don't, don't blame you. But we'd like to invite the board to engage in a discussion around these questions. First of all, we've talked to you about a model that we think builds on the education quality standards and the board's priorities and tries to take that one step further by, by suggesting elements of a model that builds on the capacities already in place in our schools and in the AOE to put together a robust accountability model for the state. Does this proposal reflect the general direction that you had in mind? Does this, does this honor the goals and the, and the challenges that you gave us? And are there missing elements? Are there elements that should not be in this model? And then what role finally should the state board play in enabling this work as we go forward? So I think that's, that's where we'd like the conversation to go.
Follow-up question, because you talked a lot about the data collection and the challenges of collecting data. Is there anything else that we should be doing as a board, or just in general in the education community, to make it so we actually have data that we can compare between schools? I mean, what do you, because that's a huge vision, because everybody has different data collection, just how they collect the data, who collects it? Even within my own school, it's so backwards. I collect data with one learning management system, have to hand enter it into another one that was built in the 1980s that reports it out to parents, and then it gets transferred again to the state level. So how can we streamline data, data collection to help this model work, or what vision do you have for that?
And I'm reluctant to get too much into specifics, because we, we don't see this as a plan that we're ready to roll out yet. And what we're trying to do is just throw out a direction to see if the direction fits with broad stakeholders. We're also going to bring this direction to the, the various stakeholders in other forums and contexts to get feedback as well. And I think those specific, those specific questions have to be resolved as we come up with a firm proposal. So I, I don't want to get too far in until we understand whether this is actually a direction we want to take. That said, we do know the state is developing a longitudinal data system. That is a place that could be modified to accept a broader spectrum of data, including survey data, including, you know, some of the data from the performance assessments. One of the things that's already being developed in-state are these, these indicators of proficiency in, in the key areas that were indicated in, in the education quality standards. So we would be looking at that as well. And that, you know, as we move forward, that could be a decision that the group makes. This is going to take a while to develop.
I commend the model. I think it's the direction we really need to be going. One of the first questions that comes to mind is, we've got this elephant in the room called the testing in all of the grades three through eight, plus the high school test, which really, to change my metaphor, takes up all the oxygen, takes all the, we know that we're stripping out instructional time for those seven goals that this board has already embraced in order to do one or two. already embraced in order to do one or two. And it strikes me that the only way we can make this thing work is to do less testing on this one. And if we're just taking the federal model, which is flawed for all the reasons that we know, and tacking this on top of it, we're really just multiplying the amount of work that we might be doing. So I think that it's, we really have to get relief from the federal situation, and both the testing, and you've mentioned what's wrong with the VAM models, and that's absolutely correct, we need to get away from that. But I think that's going to have to be one of the first questions we face, and one that we're going to have to face with the feds. And we should do that now, really at the beginning of the game. On one hand, you've got to get ready to make a good presentation for them, but it's a chicken and the egg thing.
Right. I think that's, that is the essential question. And I, I think, here's what I would say to it. We can't go to the, we can't go and ask for flexibility in the waiver, because right now there are schools that really don't evaluate teachers. And so until we have credibility in terms of having systems and ensuring that every teacher is getting high-quality feedback that they can use to get better, until we can demonstrate that we do have a robust way of tracking student growth across the, the learning progressions and the proficiency pathways, it's very difficult to have that conversation, because we have tremendous variability in performance, just in terms of evaluation right now in-state. I think you're right, we have to simultaneously begin to have conversations, and we are beginning to have those conversations. To seek greater flexibility, we're beginning to reach out to some of the other non-waiver states to see if there's some common ground. But to, to really push that conversation, we need something robust in place. Longer term, if there is flexibility, then I think the state board could take the lead on some other changes that go beyond this. Ideal, I'm not sure if we're using tests primarily to audit gains, I'm not sure we do need to test in grades three through eight. We could go back to what we did before in grades four, eight, and ten, or eleven, and then, and then use some of the resources freed up by that to invest in professional development and learn, earn some of the other components that we think are really important. The, the virtue of this model is that we're trying to draw on elements where there's already tremendous work in, in place. And, you know, Chris, you alluded to the League of Innovative Schools and some of the work around proficiency pathways. These are already being developed in-state, regardless of whether you adopt this model. So we're not trying to invent from scratch, we're trying to figure out what's already being done in-state that's good, high-quality work, and figure out how to leverage that out across the state to create some options. Surveys are relatively, in the scheme of things, inexpensive compared to some of the other efforts. And the bottom line is, if we don't, if you're in a school that doesn't have a teacher evaluation model, you, you need to get one. You know, we need to have one, that's not, that's not an okay outcome. So what the terrific work of the task force has done is come up with a, a set of recommended guidelines for high-quality, robust teacher, standards-based teacher evaluation that we're going to put out there, we're going to try to, we're going to invest, and we're going to try to develop high-quality professional development opportunities for principals and schools that don't have it in place. But they need to get it, that has to be done. And then there's other work that's being done around student learning objectives, I know it's in process, we're waiting to hear any grant. We, we need to get something in place before, but there's no reason we can't layer those other pieces that are ongoing in place as we go forward. But I have, I have a tremendous sense of urgency around building on what's already been done and is good, and trying to put it into a model that, so that when we do sit down with USDAOE, for example, we can say, this is what you're saying, this is what the research tells us about the effect of your model in our state, this is what we're proposing instead. But until we have that instead, we really can't have that conversation. Is that any to your question?
Yes.
Is there a question?
I'd say I, I'm very excited by what you presented in terms of the, the direction of the proposal. I feel, it's exact, I feel like it's exactly what we're talking about, what EQS is talking about, it feels very cohesive, so that's very exciting. Chris, I particularly liked that slide of the balance between the, the student choice and the statewide, the ability to compare. I appreciate that attempt for the middle, I think that's very challenging. My, I guess to kind of be, I mean, almost be very specific, I think my question is where, how do we get teachers that time to do, whether it's a state or a local, all those systems? I feel like just in a little mini example, I see my daughter's fabulous elementary school teacher out of the classroom all the time doing assessments, you know, three times a year assessing kids on reading, and how much time it takes for her to take them out, and then what we pay for the substitutes to come in. And so how do we make space for that, those anecdotal records? Because as was mentioned this morning, I'm positive that that teacher can tell you exactly what all the kids, where they are in reading, without actually having to go through the running record to get the score, to put it in the box, to put in the thing. So how do we, as we're coming up with surveys and all these great performance assessments, I don't know, how do we, how do we streamline that so the teachers can actually stay in the classroom? Do that work? So you can answer that.
Your view of surveys, they don't have to leave the classroom. Do you want to, do you want to speak to that? Why don't you speak about the performance?
Yeah, I'm just a little excited, I don't, I mean, like, some of this is getting into kind of down the road implementation stuff, but I think that I can say from, and this came up a lot in school, for when we're talking about the same kinds of things we're asking new schools to do, where's the time comes from, where's the money come from, et cetera. I think that something that I've been aware of as we've been working through this is that in a lot of cases, we're not talking about placing new systems on top of systems on top of systems, we're talking about taking one system and maybe transitioning it to something else, or saying this might be an effective way, or more effective way of assessing the same content. So we're not talking about necessarily, in addition to the assessments that you're doing, do these assessments too, and if you could also do these assessments, that'd be great. And we're going to pull you out for some PD around those things for two days of your, your classroom week. I think that we're, we're looking for ways to, to make this feel like an organic evolution instead of like a system on top of what people already have. You know, what that looks like in practice, I think it's going to take some time to evolve. But one of the benefits of doing this work through, with, with participation from the field in a lot of these conversations is that, you know, those kinds of concerns are representative of the conversation, that we can, we can let them play out as part of our discussions.
Well then, I was trying to say, then, then in terms of like number three, the role that the board could play, I think the, just even that language of we're not putting systems on top of systems, where it's an evolution, whatever the language is, I feel like one of our biggest potential roles is to be the cheerleaders, to be the advocates. And I think part of what happens sometimes is we're all using slightly different language to talk about what's happening at the state level, and even, you know, as basic as like talking points that explain those things. I think, at least for me, it could be very helpful to, like, we, even that, the conversation of, you know, we will all have, all the schools will be failing under these tests. What's our answer to that? And have, be, all have some language that we're all using to explain that, so you don't have that kind of public outcry of what's happening in Vermont schools. And I think that's a role that we can really play, if we all have the same, same language shoes.
That's a good point, and we can work on that. I think the other thing to point out is, you know, I mean, let's be transparent about the fact that what the EQS is asking is for transformation, right? And so the, the model that Chris and Deb are talking about, both of those tools, the PLPs and the proficiency pathways, what we're trying to do is provide tools and resources that support schools in making a transition that they're now required to make by statute. So it's, it's, it's not supposed to be an add-on, it's supposed to be an accessory that helps them make that transition, because they do have to do that.
What's, this is all very exciting. I mean, it's, I'm only seeing it, and, and is there copies of this, or?
Do you, do you feel that's, we, we did, we do, our, our, I think, we were happy to share, we need, we need to share it with a caveat that this, we're just trying on an idea right now, and what we need the board to do is say, is this, does this idea fit your intent?
Well, from, speaking for one person, yes, it's exciting, and I would encourage you. My question is, what, how do you see this process unfolding? What, do you, do you come to us with this, and we adopt it as a policy, or what, what's the procedure? And maybe, maybe my question is premature.
Well, there's two, there's actually two questions in your question. One is how the work gets done, and I think Chris can speak to that. And then the other question is, goes back to Stacy's question, is what's the role of the board? And I think one thing that would be helpful is to, at some point, perhaps get a resolution from the board that, that gives us direction in terms of moving forward. What, does this, does this support your mission, does it advance your mission? That's something you might want to entertain at, as a future meeting. And then, Chris, do you want to talk about the work? Because one of the reasons I really appreciate Chris's work is that you have a lot of experience bringing in broad groups of stakeholders, and if this is an idea, we need to figure out how to do that.
Yeah, right. And this is, I mean, I don't know if this will answer your question or not, I hope it will, to a degree. This is a very broad stroke on how the work gets done. It's, it's, again, it isn't as simple as this, it's not going to be as simple as this for something as huge as what we're talking about. This is a way, maybe framing the work that might help you to understand where we are in the process and what we're thinking about in the way of a process. We are, I think when we were looking at this, we were thinking about two phases, this kind of this foundation-building phase, where we have the policy in place, and we're thinking about what the scope of each one of these initiatives is going to look like. And then we're going to move into implementation at some point. Some, some initiatives already are moving into, into implementation, we talked about the PLP work, for instance, and the website went up. I think that they're phasing into something else. But I think that all the initiatives, I think, I think the big takeaway from this, if you can take away anything from this, is that we're really looking at very intentionally aligning these things and bringing them together into a cohesive plan, so that we don't have a lot of outlying initiatives that are happening that aren't really tied into this as a whole. We started off with policies that we had in place, and, and the great thing about having, like, all of these things coming up at the same time through EQS and through Act 77, and then also, like, you know, these existing, like, the MTSS work that's been done recently, say, or the school improvement model, that came out recently. We have a lot of things in place that are kind of bubbling up at the same time, and that makes it easier to tie things together really intentionally, when everything is kind of evolving in more or less, you know, the same phases. And this work really helped to define the scope and the sequence of what we were thinking about, the way of initiative by initiative, what those things would look like, what the rollout around those things would look like. And then as, you know, we get clarity around what we really want to measure for each one of these initiatives, that helps to inform the school accountability model. And, you know, this should really be a double-sided arrow, a lot of these should be technically, because, you know, then the data accountability model, I'm sure, will inform the work of the PLP group, and of the proficiency-based learning group, and of the school improvement model that we're working on for next year. So, but, but generally, you know, it's the idea that policy informs our practice, and then our practice, you know, as a part of that, we're identifying outcomes that we want to measure. And then, you know, once we have the foundation in place and we move into implementation, and that's, you know, something that's more cyclical, and every one of these initiatives is probably going to have its own implementation cycle, its own evaluation cycle, its own revision cycle, but all of those things are going to, because they're being designed with cohesion in mind, it's going to be easier, I think, for us to say, look, like, this is how proficiencies, say, were represented in the PLP work last year, we're doing some revisions around what proficiencies look like, so let's make some revisions accordingly to what the PLP, you know, part of the proficiency model is. And, you know, as we make those kinds of connections, it'll be easy to, I think, or easier at least, to draw connections between those things and the school accountability model. So I think that right now, we're kind of in this phase of things, where we're talking about identifying the scope and the sequence of a lot of this work, and talking about what the fundamental components of the school accountability model are going to look like, we're developing those things. Once we have those things in play, one by one, I think the initiatives are kind of leading the game and starting to kind of take on a life of their own, but we'll be moving slowly into implementation and then, you know, evaluation provision.
Just, where he said several times is cohesion, a word that was said this morning in the session, the legislators, was continuity and consistency. When I go out and meet with stakeholder groups, that's what I keep hearing. We have a lot of stuff going on. You know, that what the accountability model hopes to do is sort of herd those cats back into a coherent vision, because it, it's really good work, what we need is some kind of coherence around our purpose.
I think I would suggest that you might work with a board member over lunch with some proper language for a motion that would be presentable this afternoon during the full board meeting.
Okay. So Rebecca, I would add that, for me, certainly as a practitioner, I, I think the direction's absolutely right on, particularly in terms of finding a balance with the accountability system. I think that perhaps one of the things, things that might be missing is, at what point is there really good, I think Stacy sort of alluded to this, is what's the communication with the public? How do we, how do we bring them into the fold and make sure that they have a really good sense of what this is? Because I know that as we move forward and as we get to S-STAT before, perhaps when we've moved into this, that there's going to be lots and lots of talk about how the, the accountability system that exists right now doesn't align with what is coming along. But I think that this is where we have to be. And what I see also with this is that the stress level, and you've spoken about that a number of times in terms of just what that does for, you know, kids in terms of, you know, their ability to concentrate and learn, is also true for teachers, and that whenever we can alleviate whatever stress there is around that, that it would be really good to be able to communicate that. And so that's what I would see is missing. And I think it's absolutely the right direction.
We need a communication plan.
You need, yeah.
My hope is, I mean, I think, you know, I was speaking to a bunch of teachers the other day, and one of the perverse incentives of some of the test-based accountability, particularly when you start talking about growth models, is it actually penalizes teachers who choose to work with some of the most complicated children. And so I think that there is actually, hopefully, going to be some relief in this for teachers, in that we can start to acknowledge the contributions people make without penalizing teachers and principals and superintendents for choosing to work in more challenging communities. Because at the end of the day, the goal is to make the learning better. So I'm hoping we can do that. And, and I think, just to reiterate, it's very helpful to get your feedback, because we need to find a way to make sure this isn't just an added-on that's done to teachers. This needs to be something, and the implementation timeline needs to be planned in a way that it feels respectful of the work.
It's already happening.
It's already happening. And again, that's why when sitting and thinking about the options, we were really trying to strategically, Danielson, the AOE in the Teacher Effectiveness Task Force surveyed schools about what practices were, and I think it was seventy percent, wasn't it Martha? Of the schools are using some permutation of Danielson. Well, that's a way we can work, and, you know, interestingly, my guess is some of the other thirty have robust models, we can let them fill their models, and some of them are those schools that don't have any evaluation at all. And those are the schools that maybe we should just push, you know, some Danielson in, just to make it consistent, not be disruptive, but just help people take it the next step.
Any comments or questions? Go ahead.
Just pulling off Bonnie, I mean, I see some of the communications, our role too, and that goes back to some of our, what we want to do as a board, I think that we need to start communicating more. And I think that comment came out this morning with other boards too, other school boards, in communicating what's happening in, in that piece and that role. And even if it's as simple as a letter to all school boards and, from the State Board of Education, and communicating some of those ideas, I think that could be part of our role too, to help out.
Any questions or comments from audience members?
I just wanted to say that I'm very impressed with the presentation that you've given at your first board meeting.
Thank you, Tammy. Honestly, I'm just the talking head for the tremendous work done.
I did actually like the, the verb that Chris used when he said they go in armed with kneecap results, because that's, you know, living through, as a school board member for eight, nine years not making AYP, that's what it feels like to people, is that you're coming in armed and ready to fight. And I think that this really shows that the, it's, it's not, that's not what you're really trying to do.
And just an aside, it's also, I, I was, we were looking at some of the score reports for some of the schools, and I was interested to see a number of schools that are so small that when you pull up their score reports, they have no data for five years. So, you know, on the flip side, there are schools that really have no accountability at all, because if you're N is small enough, there's no, there's no data, no public data.
Well, and I think if we all know that we're, I mean, we say this over and over again, you're comparing, you're comparing numbers year after year, you're not comparing students. And, you know, that's really not a, a really genuine way to see if there's improvement in student models. And, I mean, now that it's been so long, we can see bodies of, but it's still not an effective way to, to, to gauge, I feel.
And to go back to the two points, and this was really echoed again in the Teacher Effectiveness Task Force work, but that, that what we care about is how we help people get better. And that kind of data is very different from data that just tells you where you are.
It's not growth model.
Right. It's not growth, and it's not focusing on the mechanisms by which people improve.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I feel very fortunate to be an educator in Vermont. This is where I'm, I'm talking to teachers from other states, and they would just die for this, so I'm, thank you. One piece that I would love to see in your first slide, so we can talk about the importance of leadership, and, like, is enhancing teacher effectiveness in those schools. This has happened in my own profession.
And, and, yeah, that, it's funny, I just assume leadership also includes teacher And, yeah, that, it's funny, I just assume leadership also includes teacher effectiveness, and that may be a problem, and I need, we need to think about that, and maybe you can help with that. It's interesting, I think I've had conversations with some of you about this, but when you look at what predicts improvements, it isn't actually individual teacher efficacy, it's collective efficacy. And it really is, you take a great teacher, put him in a very weak school with weak internal authority, they will do worse. You put them in a powerful school with strong colleagues who are motivated to be professionally learning, they will do better. So it really is building that collective efficacy, and we need to have a model that supports that. And again, the inspectorate model hopefully does that, because it involves educators in that model in terms of having those rigorous discussions.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. This is exciting, and we look forward to working with you on this, and we'll take it up again this afternoon when the full board convenes. We'll break now, and I think we're scheduled to come back at 1:15?
Yes.
What time? Right. And this, in fact, has not been quite, it's a resolution that hasn't been approved by the board, but I can assure you it will be approved at the meeting this afternoon. So let me read it. It's in honor of Armando Valaseca. Whereas Armando Valaseca has faithfully served Vermont's education system in various capacities since 1979, and whereas he has served as a classroom teacher at the Georgia Middle School, and as a teaching principal at the Reading Elementary School, and whereas he served as a principal of the West Elementary and Middle School, and as assistant principal and principal at the Essex High School, and whereas he has served as superintendent of schools at the Colchester School District and Franklin West Supervisory Union School District, and whereas he faithfully served as the Vermont Commissioner of Education for four years, and whereas he was selected by the State Board of Education and the Governor of Vermont to lead Vermont's education system as the first Secretary of Education, January through December of 2013, and whereas he taught courses in Havana, Cuba, his native land, through Burlington College for U.S. teachers and administrators, and whereas he was founding chief of the New England Secondary Schools Consortium, where he relentlessly and passionately advocated for personalization and innovation in learning, and whereas Commissioner and Secretary of Education, he spearheaded efforts to establish an alliance of rural chiefs through the Council of Chief State Officers, and whereas a Commissioner and Secretary of Education, he championed improving opportunities for Vermont students, and advocated continuously for sustained and continuous efforts to improve Vermont's system of school organization and efficiency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Vermont State Board of Education expresses its deepest gratitude to Armando Valaseca for all he has done to advance the educational opportunities for all Vermont students, and the State Board of Education expresses its sincere appreciation for his assistance in transitioning the Department of Education to the Agency of Education, and the State Board of Education wishes Armando Valaseca the very best in his future endeavors. Approved unanimously by the Board of Education on January 21, 2014. Congratulations. We'll set that to be displayed very prominently. Not in your bathroom.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and a pleasure, and I appreciate all the work that you all do to help Vermont kids, and I think that Rebecca is going to be even better than I in all the work that she's been doing, and look at some of the work that we've been seeing today. So I think we're all in very good hands, and I look forward to each of us having a productive and happy future together. Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Can we break for lunch now, Carol? Okay. Yes, but we'll do that down.
I have to read my handwriting.
Krista was badly behaved.
January 2014, State Board of Education meeting to order, and as usual, we'll start our meeting off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will start our meeting by going around the table with introductions of the State Board of Education. I'm Stephen Morris from Newfane, Vermont.
Lockwood Francis Putney.
Bonnie Johnson Dayton Montoya.
Bill Mathus Goshen.
Krista Heeling Jeffersonville.
Stacy Weinberger Burlington.
Morgan McHyver Plainfield.
Sean Marie Oler Bennington.
And our newest member.
Bring her own chairs.
That's what we make special treatment.
Rebecca Holcomb. All right, as we were adjourning our, our work session this morning, we, you all heard a resolution that needs the approval of the full board.
So I would like to move that the State Board of Education to recognize the service of our first Secretary of Education and former Commissioner Armando Valaseca. Adopt the resolution as read earlier.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Sean Marie. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and we've adopted the resolution. Also this morning, we, during the work session, we had a very exciting and interesting presentation by the new Secretary of Education, and I think this board wants to go on record of encouraging that, so is there a motion? Krista?
That the State Board of Education endorses the philosophy, plans, and directions outlined by Secretary Holcomb for a broader, more comprehensive assessment and accountability system. Furthermore, the board views this as a priority and wishes this to be communicated to the agency and the Vermont education community and citizenry, ah, can't even say the word. Citizen, say it, Bill, for me.
Citizenry.
Thank you, at large.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Bill seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and we have endorsed the motion and highly encouraged the agency to proceed. Are there members of the public that wish to be heard? Let me do one thing first. Let's go around, we did that, we did the introductions, yes. Public to be heard.
How's it going? Thanks for having me.
Why don't you introduce yourself and...
So my name is Chad Butt, I'm the Executive Director of Mobius, Vermont's mentoring partnership. I want to thank you all for the opportunity for having me here today to talk to you briefly about mentoring in Vermont. As a newly formed statewide mentoring partnership, Mobius is uniquely positioned to promote mentoring and build connections on the state level now, to bolster support for mentoring and ultimately collaborate with others to ensure that young people throughout Vermont have every opportunity possible to succeed in life. I think I can accurately assume that all of us here have had mentors at some point in our lives that have helped us get to where we are today. Most of them probably were informal mentors, but I'm sure some of them may have been structured mentoring relationships. Mobius actively supports programs across Vermont that establish these structured adult-to-youth mentoring relationships. These programs can be community-based, where an adult is working with an individual mentee in the community, picking them up at their home and taking them out for an activity once a week. They can be site-based, working with mentor, mentees, meeting at a community center, or school-based, where a mentor actually comes into a school and works with a child once a week during the school day or before or after school. Regardless of the program model, these mentoring relationships all have in common one thing, that it's another caring, consistent adult in a child's life that's working with them on a weekly basis, and it's someone that's not one of their family members. Since 2006, there's been a focus in Vermont to increase the number of school-based mentoring programs. There have been 59 new school-based mentoring programs established in the last eight years, who have, and those school-based mentoring programs we've found affected to not only bring the results we like to see in mentoring programs, but we also have found that they're very cost-effective, and they bring in new volunteers to schools, volunteers that we've had trouble finding to get to be mentors in places that are less populated in the state. I have a, just a handout I'd love to give to everybody.
Sure.
Sure. So what's going around here, it's a two-page document that I'm hoping will help provide some context for what Mobius is and what we do, the proven benefits of mentoring, a little bit about how mentoring and the state school districts are already intertwined, and the current need for more mentoring around the state. Great, yeah. I'd like to touch into some of the points in this document briefly, provide some time to make sure that you have time to ask questions, and hopefully start a conversation around how Mobius and the Board of Ed may collaborate to achieve our common mission of enabling each young Vermonter the ability to be successful. Real quick, history of Mobius, over the last 10 years, Mobius was a Chittenden County mentoring umbrella, supporting mentoring programs in Chittenden County by providing trainings, recruiting mentors, and providing technical assistance. Over the last couple of years, mentoring programs around the state, funders, supporters of mentoring got together and built the groundwork for us to become what we are now, which is Vermont's statewide mentoring partnership. We currently have about 100 mentoring sites throughout the state that we support. Those sites combined support around 2,500 mentor matches, adult-to-child, and of those 100 sites, there's at least 65 of them that are actually occurring in the schools around the state. Our role as a statewide partnership is to lead statewide initiatives, offer program support, provide funding to programs, and raise public awareness about mentoring. So the statewide initiatives we're working on, we have a directory of statewide programs around, on our website, and a referral system, so people that are looking to be, get involved have an easy way to figure it out. We have a statewide database, so mentoring programs around the state can collect common data in a common way. We're working with programs to ensure that mentor matches that are made in elementary school can continue all the way through high school, even when a child goes from elementary to middle school. If that program doesn't support it, we've found ways that they can continue. We're also working to figure out what data from schools can be collected so that mentoring programs can have more resources on hand to support the youth they work with better. Public support, the program support we offer, we offer technical assistance, we connect programs with one another across the state, and we ensure that programs are meeting best practices and that everybody's staying safe. We provide funding that comes from the state directly out to programs, and bring in more funding from foundations that we grant out as well. Mobius is an affiliate, Vermont's affiliate, with Mentor of the National Mentoring Partnership. We partner with other 23 mentoring partnerships around the nation to provide support to mentoring programs and raise awareness about mentoring. If you flip to the other page, the second part of this document, you can see just some quick bullet points of why mentoring is important and the benefits that mentoring brings to youth. As you look at these, I'd like to keep in mind that a lot of the mentors, the mentees that are in programs are youth that may struggle in one of the, one or two of these aspects already, which I think makes them even more impressive stats. There's a great deal of overlap in the benefits mentoring has and the goals that schools have for their youth as well. These benefits, I think, make a great, a strong case for the natural partnership that already exists between schools and mentoring, and feel that there's a great potential for closer collaboration with mentoring and the Agency of Ed. Thank you for your time, and I hope that we can start a conversation about how mentoring and schools can collaborate further to benefit the youth in Vermont.
Questions, comments from the board?
I have a comment. Mark Perrin stepped up during National Mentorship, so we have a restaurant partner, everybody wins in Mobius, so a portion of their proceeds from the restaurant, from the menu, went towards...
Oh terrific. Good.
Steve?
Yes.
So, how do you, how do you fit in with some of the other mentoring organizations, like Big Brothers, Big Sisters is part of, you know, is a national organization that does that? I know where I'm from, it's usually through UCS. There's a, I mean, there's a couple other models out there, so how does this fit in with, with what's, what's going on in Vermont already?
So within Vermont, we are now the, sort of the umbrella organization for all of mentoring in Vermont. So Wyndham County, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Bennington County, they're all working with us, and we're helping support them, providing them funding, connecting them, helping them, they know their area better, so, I mean, the Bennington, Big Brothers, Big Sisters is pulling together mentoring programs in their area with help from us to put on actual conference about what we can do about gathering data for schools. So we, we work, we're all work alongside.
So I haven't, I mean, obviously I haven't read this in detail, but your model, is your model in-school? Is it an in-school model?
We, we actually don't, Mobius itself is not a mentoring program.
Okay.
So we, we support all the other models that are out there, in-school, community-based, site-based. We help the ones that exist already. If there's an area that needs mentoring that has expressed interest, we help figure out where that need can be met, and if not, we help them start new programs through funding and also providing resources.
Okay. Thank you.
How do you recruit mentors? And then, I'm sure you have a certain amount of dropout that goes through the program. How do you maintain your numbers and your relationships? That seems like a tough problem.
So every, every program is different, but there, we, all programs, we have a core standards for Vermont that are based on national standards. We ask that mentors commit to one, at least one school year. And ultimately, I'd say, most people that become mentors have been thinking about it for a while and sort of been figuring out how to figure it out with their, their schedule. So there are some that are going to move out, if they move out of town and whatnot, but the majority really do stick with it for at least that one year. And once people start mentoring, we find that they usually get hooked, they realize the benefit that they're having and the benefit that they get from it, and stick with it for more than one year. For recruitment, every program is trying different methods. The most effective method for recruitment is actually current mentors recruiting their friends, because they see the benefit, and they see that their peer can already do it, so that they can as well. But our state, our website has an opportunity, if anybody wants to get involved, they can go on, and we fill out an inquiry form, and we can connect them with the mentoring program in their area that would fit their needs.
Strikes me that going for recently retired people might be a good thing to do.
Definitely, definitely. I think the school-based programs especially can benefit from that, because those are the folks that may, may be able to come into the school during the school day, if they're not successful.
Thank you very much. Sounds very exciting.
Thank you. No problem.
Are there other members of the public that wish to be heard today? Not seeing any, we'll move on. Are there board updates? Bill?
Couple of things. Did attend the education policy group on Monday and the finance group on Tuesday. My takeaway from that, I thought Tony Wagner did a great job in terms of talking about some of the things that we were talking about on assessment and accountability. On the finance thing, I did not see the sense of, the common sense of a direction on the finance issue, and I didn't really sense as much dissatisfaction with the funding system as what we would expect. I'm going to NASB tomorrow for the GLC, the Governmental Affairs Committee, and one of the things they're going to be talking about is the pushback on common core state standards and the pushback in terms of the assessment programs. I don't know where that's going to be, given NASB's historical role, but it's interesting that they're having this discussion with this much fervor and dissatisfaction going on.
Other members, Krista?
So this month, I was a judge for the Bernie Sanders essay contest, and it was students from around the state of Vermont writing what they thought the State of the Union was. And there's over 350 students submitted an essay, I had to read 70 of them, and then passed on four of the best, and there were five judges, and just went through yesterday, read the next 20, and so there should be a winner coming out, and the winners, their, their writing will be read into the congressional record. But I thought was very telling, especially for us, most of the students wrote about education, and even the cost of higher education, and the idea of it being unattainable, or how they're going to pay for it, and that was a very common theme that I saw, and these are seniors around the state of Vermont, from Woodstock to, I mean, there were ones in Woodstock, Bradleboro, Burlington, up in Northeast Canton, so it was all over the state, and it was just a common theme. So just wanted to bring that to you, that our students are thinking of that and how to pay for higher education. I know we don't really, we don't have control over that, but we do have control over the dual enrollment, and maybe helping students take advantage of that and get some college credits before they go to lessen the cost.
No other comments? We'll move on then. I don't have a report, unless you want to hear about biking in Florida for the last three weeks, but I would doubt that. Let's move on to the Legislative Committee report.
Mr. Chairman, the piece of action that we need to take is to adopt the Legislative Agenda 2014 that we discussed and already presented to the legislature, so I suppose maybe we ought to adopt it. As you know, we've talked about this and discussed it and modified it over the October, November meeting, excuse me, the November, December meetings, and there's been some small tweaks to it. There's one additional thing here, and I think this was, the chairman was going to communicate the request for $15,000 to be added to the State Board budget. Were we going to do this?
Let's do it in two separate motions. Let's, let's adopt the, the report and then bring up the second issue separately.
Okay. First motion then would be to adopt the Legislative Agenda for 2014, dated January the 17th, as presented, and I would move that.
I'll second that.
It's been a second, is, everyone has a copy of it, everyone's... It's been a second, is, everyone has a copy of it, everyone's comfortable with it. Call for the vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we've officially adopted our 2014 Legislative Agenda. If you recall at, on the second issue, if you recall, I think it was at the December meeting, it, there was, well, let me go way back. Initially, we approached the administration suggesting that the, in that the State Board of Education now operated independently, that we needed funding for three positions to manage the, and assist the board. That did not strike a lot of excitement across the street, so we all agreed to, to back off, but in looking at the finances for the current fiscal year, which are running about even with, with last year, and, and knowing some of the outreach work that we wanted to do this year, we noted that there was about an 11, a potential $11,000 deficit. Not in FY14, but planning ahead for FY15. We've been informed that, that the agency took their budget requests, which included our $11,000 increase request to the administration, and the administration has decided to submit an appropriation bill that level funds the agency. Which means that the, the funds that we think were going to be short are, are not going to be available. Now, there's a number of ways of handling that. A, and I think this is a proposal from the Legislative Committee, we could request additional funding through the legislative process, or when the, as the fiscal year is coming to an end, some of the bills might not be paid and, and paid subsequently in the following fiscal year. Apparently that's happened in the past. But I think Bill will make the motion, but I, I think the Legislative Committee felt in this era of independence from the agency that we needed to make sure that, that, you know, our funding and our expenses were, were covered. So I believe Bill's going to make a motion suggesting that we go to the Legislature looking for an additional $15,000, which would raise our budget to a little under $90,000 for the year. Any questions or comments?
I think you want me to make that motion now. So moved.
Is, is there a second to Bill's motion? Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimously passed. Who seconded?
Bonnie.
Bonnie did.
I'll take it. I noticed that Stephen didn't put before.
Bill, thanks for all your hard work on the legislative thing, and obviously we're, we're just beginning, but, and I believe we have a report from the Strategic Planning Committee?
Sort of. At some point, we'll have a complete report for you. There are only two of us there again today. We have yet to have a full committee meeting, but what we were able to do today is develop a timeline, a timeline for the development of the strategic plan, which we're putting together and will share out with the board once we finalize it. So that's, that's what we spend our time doing today.
Okay.
That's it.
And Krista, you have the report from, we call it the Governance Committee now?
Yes, yeah. And, and just let me say, it's Mark, he called me an hour before he's boarding the plane for Hawaii to make sure I put this together. And he's like, well, we don't have much for you to work from, because we didn't really accomplish much. We, we learned a lot, but we didn't, we didn't really put down and come up with a big accomplishment. But we met on January the 7th, and we're actually going to be meeting again February the 17th at 3:30 at South Burlington High School, so my home school. And so I'm still waiting for a rebound back on that. But really, we were just getting information on governance within the state of Vermont and really starting to think about questions and what does a supervisory union, what does it look like in size, students geographically, and just hearing different perspectives. And we really heard from Stephen Dale, he came and talked to us about his perspective, and we're just hearing from different perspectives and really haven't put together a solid cohesive idea quite yet, but we're working on it.
One of the things I have been sensing since this morning, and I heard about it, is that governance on the supervisory level may have some prominence in the Legislature this year, so I would make sure you share that with Mark and it may, you may want to move your schedule up a little bit because of that.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments on the committee reports?
Let's ask Krista, when you gathered information, you had people knowledgeable on the structure?
Yes, yeah. And so we really, so far in our meetings, it's really been, I'd say more learning than anything else in going through and looking at the history of supervisory unions, how they came into being, and then just the practice and the different size and scope of them around the whole state, and really what is the best practice? Is it best practice to have 14 districts within one supervisory union, and is that effective? And, and just looking at the different strategies.
Thank you.
Can I add, Sean Marie just had that I think it's been interesting to hear, getting some, the structures and kind of the facts, but also some of the more anecdotal information where it won't be a surprise that they said, if you've seen, the joke has been, if you've seen one supervisory union, you've seen one supervisory union. So that it really came down to the balancing the structures with like the players, like will, is this supervisory union successful because it has X number of kids and X number of schools, or is it successful because of that leader? So I've talked to both people who look at the big organizations, but also have talked to principals and superintendents as well, and getting a sense of what makes something successful.
Leadership.
Any other questions or comments on committee reports? And we'll move on to the Secretary's report.
All right. I'll try to keep it brief because I think you heard enough from me this morning. I just wanted to thank you all, and thank you for listening to us this morning and supporting us with the resolution that is going to help us focus our work as we move forward. Focus, cohesion, coherence, consistency, these are words we've heard in various forums. In terms of the agency, that's what we really need right now. You had a tremendously ambitious session last year. We have a lot of new, new legislation, new quality standards to work on and integrate, and really think about how we implement them so that the implementation is done with fidelity and it's not just, you know, facework or a Potemkin village. So really, that's our goal as we move forward. When I think about the role of the Agency of Education and I think about the conversations we've been having internally, they've been focusing on what the AOE can do to move this important work that Armando has started and that we're trying to continue around consistent improvement of student learning. And there are really three areas we can do that. And the first is leadership, and the effort to try to work on the, at the governor's behalf on developing a model for balanced accountability is really a piece of that. We're trying to put out a vision for how we can do this that actually serves our, our shared goals. We also can provide support, and that means both offering models, but also working with various stakeholders and partners to pool our resources and pool our efforts to try to support professional educators as they get better and as they work to implement these pieces in the field. And then obviously, we can monitor, and I think you all know what that means. And so we've been working internally to really clarify what is our, what are our most important goals, and then what are the individual things that each of our divisions do that really support those goals? And the, the conversations have been powerful, and I just can't tell you how grateful I am to have such a strong team in the agency that, that really is passionate and committed to this work. We do face diminished capacity, but we have tremendous heart and expertise in the agency, and we look forward to working with you to advance our goals. I also wanted to just call out just a couple of nice things that have happened, because I think we often, as Morgan was saying, we often hear about the bad news, or you were saying, we hear about the bad news. Couple of good, good news items that have happened. Some of you may have seen the Vermont PBIS grant, a report that came out at the end of December. I just wanted to call that out because as I go out into the field, one of the things I'm constantly hearing about is the prevalence of challenging behaviors in schools and the challenges this poses in terms of increased referrals to discipline and special ed. And if you take the time to read that report, this was done by Carol Randall in collaboration with UVM, it's really good work. And what we're seeing is the schools that have really committed to implementing this PBIS model with fidelity over time are actually starting to see some really positive results. So I wanted to call your attention to that for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's an example of Agency of Education staff collaborating with the field and with, with UVM and higher ed to put together a model that's backed by research and support implementing it with fidelity in the field. And it's, it's getting results about things that we really care about. And then the other, the other piece of this is this is directly related to the challenge of increased referrals to special ed and increased referrals to discipline. What we're seeing is that we are able to move some of those indicators by taking a sustained and systemic approach. And I think there's a, there's a couple lessons there in that as we move forward, and even as we think about the accountability model, that we need to invest in quality professional development. The, the schools that are implementing this participate in the best institutes that are sponsored by the AOE, hosted by the AOE, and they're, they're really trained in how to implement, and then they're supported through some of that implementation. And the other is to give yourself a little time. The best results are in the schools that have implemented with fidelity for several years. And I just had the pleasure of visiting Dothan Brook Elementary. I've had the chance to visit it over several years, and I have to say, when you walk in the door now and you compare it to what it felt like walking in three years ago, it's palpable. And so just to commend the staff there and the staff in all the schools that are implementing PBIS for the tremendous work, and just to think about what that model and that experience offers us in terms of thinking about how at the agency we can really have a good impact on the field. The other piece I wanted to call out was the Green Ribbon Schools Initiative, which is sponsored by Kathy Hildendorf. This is a, you've probably heard about the Blue Ribbon Schools. Well, this is an effort to really recognize schools that have taken tremendous steps to, to implement programs related to sustainability and environmental, you know, awareness. And last year, we had three schools, the Redding Community Elementary School, St. Albans City School, and the Shelburne Community School. And this year, we're also proud to have three schools that have been nominated and that really reflect the, the depth of experience and also initiative in the state around green schools. And that's the Lake Regions Union High School, Champlain Valley Union High School, and the Camel's Hump Middle School. So really, hats off to them. Their nominations will be sent forward at the very beginning of February, and thank you also to Kathy Hildendorf for making that happen. One other initiative I wanted to call your attention to, and this again, I have, as I mentioned earlier, I stand on Armando's shoulders, but is the, the Vermont PLN, which is our new system for professional learning. We've replaced the grant-based ESA model that we used to use, and now we're giving, we have a contract with the PLN, which is really, I'm going to get this right, but three, three agencies that on behalf of the Agency of Education are working to roll out professional development for teachers and administrators in schools. And this contract was awarded in August. It has a two-year timeline, but what we're already seeing is a huge step up in terms of the number of contacts with teachers in the field, the involvement of principals in the, in planned trainings, and just getting tremendous positive feedback about that as a model. And I think this is just as an example, again, this was under Armando's tenure, but really of how, when we start to think creatively about the best way to deliver services, when you take a little, you know, creativity and you invite some good minds to the table, we can get a new model that, that maybe pushes the envelope in terms of the impact we're allowed to have on the field. And I think that's just another piece to call out. And thanks also to MC Moran in-house, who's really shepherded that process along the way. And the, the only other thing I'd love to alert you to is that in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be ready to roll out our online licensing for educators. As you know, that this is, this is a new model. We're deliberately rolling it out as a pilot so that we have a chance to work out some of the kinks in the system, if there are any, and knowing technology, there will be, with a smaller group that's prepared to, to handle this as a pilot. But this is a, this is a tremendous step forward also for licensing in the state. And thank you to Lynn Iberg and the others in the agency who've worked hard on developing that, that model and are now prepared to pilot it, so.
Terrific. Any questions or comments of the Secretary? Well, we really look forward to working with you, and I think we're off to a flying start today, so it's, it's, it's a great sentence. Thank you. Next item is the action on the consent agenda.
Some move.
Sean Marie has moved to second it, to, to approve it. Lachlan seconded. Any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the consent agenda has, has passed. We'll move on to item H, preliminary discussion, technical adjustments in Rule 220. I gather Mr. Fisher is not here today?
He's been detained by snow. He'll miss another day too.
Hi, I'm Deb Quackenbush from the agency, in case you didn't know. So, shall I begin?
Yes, please do.
So, this is just for discussion in case you should contemplate opening the rules for any reason. This rule has not really been used in about four years. The, I'm not certain of the history of why it was placed in the rules, but at this point, we're really promoting best practice and technical assistance to the field when they're seeking a special ed placement, and we're trying to support LEAs to find those. And so far, we haven't had a single situation where we haven't been able to do that in four years. So it seems obsolete at this point.
Can you be more specific? Are you talking about, you're talking about just this 2228.2?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is a rule that allows the Secretary or formerly the Commissioner to grant a waiver to an LEA seeking to place a student in a non-approved placement. Non-approved for special ed, non-approved for the disability category that they might be serving. So in the past, there have been situations where an LEA might want to use a school in New York, for example, Kildonan, who doesn't seek approval. They have a lot of students, they don't seek approval, they're a private school. Well-respected, but not approved. So we've had instances in the past where an LEA might use, ask to use a non-approved program.
Couple of questions here.
Sure.
What, what rule specifically are you talking about?
2228.2, two.
And 22...
22...
Is the exceptional...
Say it one more time, please.
Exceptional circumstances.
Oh, it's in our pack.
Item H. And then, you're talking about AI, AII, and B, the whole thing?
Excuse me.
It's on page eight of what's in your packet.
Thank you.
That helps me.
Yep. Didn't print the yellow on mine.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes.
Got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm wondering if we have somewhere else some general authority to waive off the rule in any case, even though this hasn't happened in four years, the minute that we repeal it, it's going to come back and there's going to be that exceptional case that came out of nowhere. And so I'm just wondering if it's just lying there, whether it's doing us any harm by lying there in case that we need it, or do we have some other avenue if need be? That's question one. And question two is, it's possible that we would be doing or looking at the independent school rules again anyway. I don't know what the Legislature's going to do, but I'd like to see what they were going to do. And if we're going to open this thing up, anyway, let's just do it one time and take care of things, but I don't know how things are going to unfold across the street.
Well, how does S91 relate to this?
Well, this, this is my very question. I don't know, and so I'm, I'm willing to wait till we see what happens with S91 and any attendant thing that can, who knows what kind of amendments are going to be made to S91 by the time they're finished.
The reason I even know about S91, I've been asked to go to the Senate Education Committee this afternoon and testify on it. So I'm trying to learn as much as I can about it.
Just put a bill in your pocket.
And basically, what that bill says is, independent schools shall be approved for special education in at least four categories. Not all 12, but at, at least four. And some of you will remember the last time we dealt with an independent school on, at this level, there was some, there was some huge special education issues.
And it's possible that they may say to us, we want you guys... And it's possible that they may say to us, we want you guys to take care of the broader privatization issue, but I don't know that just yet.
So, we're only here to discuss this today, is that correct?
Yes.
What, I guess I'm not clear, what, what brings this, what, what brings the agency to, to present that to us today?
Well, we were asked to take a look at the independent school rules and review them to see if they were clear. And we did that, and this was the only one that we came out with that may need attention.
So, in the agency's opinion, the existing, which would be all of Section 220, 2, 2,200, is, which deals with independent schools, is, is sufficient to handle? Now, what, what if?
Unless there are changes that happen in S-91 and...
You reviewed it with, consistent with concurrent policy?
Yes.
If there are changes, there are other areas that we know we're concerned about.
There's also the question is, the secretary was to appoint, whenever there's an independent approval request coming through a renewal, the secretary would appoint a committee of two people to take care of that. And considering our history with a recent case in which that staffing got sort of combobulated, maybe that's an area in which it needs to be a team of three or some other recommendation there. But I felt that needed to be stronger because as that thing unfolded month after month, we would be going this way and then that way, and I would think that we probably need a stronger level of staffing in terms of these things, which would also be something that we, if we're gonna clean up the rules, we ought to do it all at one time.
So...
Yes.
I found this timing rather interesting, and you just, Deb, you, you really clarified it. One of the things this board talked about was going through the rules, and before Mark had left, he reminded us that the, the authority we have is in rulemaking. And as many of you may know, I voted against the application that came before this board because I felt very strongly that what was in this whole section was not what was practiced in, and I have my notes from back then. In terms of, I mean, at the time, my concern was the section on evidence of capacity and in terms of finances, that the audit letter be certified from an accounting firm, from a person of prior year describing financial capacity. That was not done in that previous application. Nor was a letter notarized summarizing the financial status, nor was an audit from the present or fiscal year founded. And there were other inconsistencies that I was told from agency staff that that was just, that was how they had always done it. They didn't look for the things that were actually written in rule. And so, in order to show the value of a building or the, the capacity or the financial ability to sustain that school, just saying that they have X amount of enrollment doesn't really prove anything. It's just a letter with no backup. And so, when I saw this come through, I thought, oh, great, we're gonna take a look at what we're actually asking of independent schools before we make some kind of indication to put a rulemaking process in place. So, I, I, I would question a number of things in this whole 220 rulemaking in terms of what is expected of the independent school to provide, and that's kind of why I think Bill is saying to hold off because they may change legislation. It still gives this board the authority to start a rulemaking process on something that we might want changed philosophically or tangibly or process-wise within this Rule 220. So, I'm, guess I was mistaken for why, I didn't really understand the meaning of why this was coming forward. Does that make sense, Stephen?
Yes, and I mean, in fact, what, one of the things I was planning on saying this afternoon to the Senate Ed Committee is that, that there's a fairly extensive set of rules for, for privates, to, to license a private school. And for us or the Senate to deal with it on a piecemeal basis, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding. So, that was, that's the gist of what I'm gonna say this afternoon unless the board tells me something else, because I am representing the board, not, they haven't invited me just for my opinion, I'm sure.
I think you're right.
Why was that funny, Bonnie? And, and I guess I'd make the same comment here, but, but you're saying that the agency review of, of this whole set of rules, you find everything in order except this one, one section?
You know, I want, yes, I wanna speak to that a little bit, and answer Sean Marie a little bit as well. I think the rules are appropriate. I think the way they're implemented at the agency needed to improve, and that's really what needed to happen. I don't think it's the rule that needs to change, I think it's our practice.
And that's why I'm saying that what was in here was not what I saw evidence of as a board member and couldn't honestly vote in favor of something that I felt wasn't followed by our own rules. And I was obviously in a minority at that point, and it was a very awkward situation. And I appreciate you saying that, Deb, because the rules are here. It does talk about financial capacity, it does talk about special ed, it does talk about in order, in an independent school to receive approval, purpose, purpose of Rules 2, you know, .2 and 8.2, it must obtain general independent, I mean, there's, it's all here.
It is.
And the rules are, I think, as you might say, appropriate, but if we expect financial capacity or an understanding of what the enrollment is, then that's what we need to do. And I, it's not us as a state board anymore, but these are the rules that we put in place to be followed. So, that's my personal opinion. I don't, I don't disagree that we changed the secretary from the commissioner to secretary, and, you know, I think that if we wait to see what may happen, you know, if, if in fact, they want the, and I don't know how this works, if they want independent schools to be able to provide in-house, you know, six categories of special ed, then the rules need to be changed. If they want four, then the rules need to be changed. If, if they continue to say they don't need any, then maybe we wanna change it in the rulemaking process. So, I, I think it's, it's premature, although I understand that, that you would want that edited out and obviously the language, technical changes. But, you know, the, the changing of words.
Gravitation is towards changing that, that a independent school would have to do the same thing as a public school would be, which means that if you get a kid come enroll in this school in a certain handicapping condition, they have to provide for it just the same as a public school would. That's the thinking today, but whether that's what gets voted out, we don't know. And I think there were some things, because I think we had that application for us four different times with different recommendations each time. And whether that's a processing problem or a clarity problem, I think that this is such a volatile issue, we really need to look at it closely.
And comprehensively, not...
And comprehensively.
Not, not piecemeal.
Well, maybe, I, I clearly was not present, Sean Marie, whatever, at this other piece, so I'm coming at it from a different perspective, someone who worked in independent schools for years. So, I guess my, I guess I'm focusing under the exceptional circumstances part of that, and maybe that's the vagueness, that it's not so clear. But it, it seems to me that, that this is in place, I, I would read this, is this is in place for some of those very rare, exceptional circumstances, where you have a particular kid who's, lives in a community with certain needs that maybe there isn't just the right fit. And we're talking about creating best educational environments for children. I don't know, I guess there's a part of me that feels comfortable that this is here for that kind of discretion that like the secretary would use for an individual student in a very rare circumstance. And if this hasn't been an instance in the last four years, it's not something that regularly is, that we're bumping up against. So, I guess I'm either comfortable with either leaving it or revisiting it in part of a larger conversation about the role of independent schools in Vermont. But I, I don't have a problem with this, because I feel like I've worked with some of those kids for whom it was very hard to find the, the educational environment that allowed them to be successful, so.
Okay. So, this was only meant for discussion today? No action is being requested?
No action was being requested. And also, should the board desire action, I also need to bring information to the council before that happens, so.
To the...
Advisory council.
Which advisory council? Special ed or...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Independent school council.
Okay.
Is that the Independent School Association you're talking?
No.
Okay.
There's a council established under law.
Right.
You know, I, I think it, for, for the record, I think it needs to be said that even though there's been some in the last year or so, some issues with independent schools, whether specific situations or, or the rules like we're talking today, I think we all recognize the contribution that the independent schools have made to the, to the quality of the education system in Vermont. So, I, I don't want anyone to leave this room thinking that we think anything less of independent schools, but we, we, we are wrestling with how, how we're, you know, how they should be licensed and monitored, et cetera. Thank you.
One other thing this reminds me of, and I would have to go back and look up the statute, but the statute that does establish the Independent Schools Council, what is the roles and responsibilities that that council should take? I think those things, if we open up all of the issues in S-91, that would be an area that needs to be looked at as part of the whole package.
I'm doubting anyone has your answer for you today, so we look forward to hearing from you at the next meeting.
Got it.
On to item I, teacher leader task recommendations. Madam Secretary.
We alluded to this earlier. I'll pass this around just so you can see. Just wanted to mark the fact that the Teacher Effectiveness Task Force, which had been meeting for several years, in fact, I think Ken Page was part of that group, had been meeting for several years in response to a board request that they do so. And they brought together practitioners, policymakers, local and state leaders to all get together and deliberate and talk about what a model for educator support would look like. Again, and I think you'll, you'll see where we built on this in the proposed accountability model, but the overarching purpose of this effort was to improve student learning by supporting continuous learning by teachers and improvement of professional practice. So, what this, this task force marks is a shift to focusing on growth and improvement, and I think that's something to commend. It's supported, proposed supporting continuous improvements by engaging teachers in structured reflection, providing teachers with frequent opportunities for practice and feedback, and using multiple sources of evidence. So, you can see some of the themes that were echoed in the, in the plan this morning. Just to highlight a couple of the indicators that came out, there was a recommendation for standards-based observations of teacher practice, and as we discussed earlier, 70% of the schools in the state are using some permutation of the Danielson framework, so that was one of the recommended models. Though there were discussions around setting the bar for the minimum of what a standard-based model looked like, there are some districts that have very highly developed models of, of teacher evaluation feedback, and we don't wanna erode good work where it's taking place, but we do need to make sure that there is a, a capacity for improvement in every single school. And that's where this model comes in. Also, some work around surveys, I gave you some examples of items and where that might go, won't belabor that. And also, measures of student learning. And I wanted to just call out the fact that there is an initiative underway, sponsored in part by the NEA, to develop student learning outcomes, SLOs, you may have heard that term. That work is progressing a little bit more slowly than some of the other work that's in place, so our recommendation again is to continue moving forward and piloting what is in place and what we already have capacity to support, and let that work develop and be layered in as, as appropriate. If you look at the evaluation process, you'll see again, the heavy, heavy emphasis both on self-assessment, goal-setting, and reflection, by giving teachers and educators in general multiple opportunities both to gather data, act on it, and then reflect on the effect of it. The key piece that I need you to consider, and we may come back to it the next meeting for your decision, the board had asked that this be ready to roll out in the fall. We're concerned that we haven't had time to do this adequately. Implementation is complicated work. If you wanna do it well, it means that you have to support it with adequate professional development. Many schools are ready to move forward, some are not, and we're very concerned that when they do begin to work, particularly with things like these standards-based observations, that they do so well-supported and with full training so that they can meet the intent of this, of this initiative. So, our recommendation is that the board consider extending the timeline so that we pilot, and we need to move forward aggressively to pilot this, these initiatives, including the surveys in, in sites in the coming fall, but that we not move towards full implementation for another year after that. And again, our concern is that we need to work with our partners, including the VPA, to make sure other, we can provide additional support for teachers and principals. We need to set up some, some institutes that can support principals who haven't been trained to support the Danielson framework, we use it, assuming they have no other alternative in place, so that we can actually do this work with integrity and fidelity as we move forward.
Was the current implementation date, full implementation date, fall of this year?
Uh, yes, well, fall 14, yes.
So, this is a new...
This is a new proposed timeline. And you'll see also that we need to have, we need to have, the, the next phases of those work, that work group around principals and superintendents also needs to unroll. So, we may have to phase in components and use whatever we learned from that process to inform better implementation for the next cohort. So, a staggered rollout, really.
Is this the actual timeline or the proposed?
That's the proposed. And you can't vote today, but so, we'll come back at the next meeting.
Well, I was gonna ask, we can't vote 'cause it's only worn to be discussed? Carol?
Where is the, Stephen?
Yes, you may speak.
Where is the, is there, is it our rule, or was it, how did this get, I know we voted on this, but where did the initiative come from? Was it the state board?
My recollection is they proposed it to us, and it was a packet of 200 pages of stuff.
Right.
And I've, I thought the agency brought it to us, basically.
So, then, my, my memory says that we voted on this to be implemented in, in schools, all schools by a certain time. Does that...
Yeah, that's what we're saying. That's not gonna work.
So, they're supposed to have done it already?
No.
You're supposed to have voted?
September 2014.
They are all supposed to have an evaluation system in place. We know that some do not.
Right, but now, they're supposed to have it now. The, the evaluation system was supposed to be in place in school districts currently, and this is an amended, this is an amended timetable.
Yes.
And this is, this is, they're already, they're already required to have an evaluation system?
This is a, yeah, this is part of the Elementary Secondary Education Act, which wants it...
But to be keep up.
Debate is the level of student performance is used in it, but it has a number of elements they require, so this, been working on this for a number of years, yes. So, it's, it's contingent upon receiving federal funds.
And I think the reason there was such a large timeframe in implementing it was a number of school districts have evaluations tied to contracts. And so, it was to give, I, I believe, from, not this hat, but, you know, that the idea was that if they were embedded in contracts, that this was something you needed time to, to adjust or implement, and how were you gonna put those elements that Bill was just talking about into the evaluation system? And then, the state board conversation was around that value-added piece, that we were hesitant around the value-added piece, which tied the evaluations and performance to test scores.
Right.
Complete that process.
And I think we're, we're, I think this is, what, the work that you're seeing here is consistent with the balanced accountability model that we discussed this morning. The piece that we're struggling with is this, is arranging for a staggered rollout because we're concerned that not every district will be able to implement in the fall.
Okay, and this proposed timeline is one you're happy with, and two, it doesn't Okay, and this proposed timeline is one you're happy with, and two, it doesn't contradict or conflict potentially with the assessment and accountability system we're working on.
That's what the group has said, yes.
Okay. Unless I hear objection, we'll put this on the calendar, on the action calendar for the February meeting. Great? Great? Bill, I probably gave your, all your budget information out earlier, but is anything you want to add to the budget?
Well, as far as the board goes, no, I think you've covered that well. Are you interested at all in what the agency's budget looks like? There's some provision in that new law.
Yes, yes, yes. Although we don't manage the agency, we're, you know, we want to...
But something about reviewing it, and just to give you a sense of what we're doing and facing. And it's late-breaking, because everything has been delayed this year. We got our budget targets from the administration two days before Christmas. We're calling that up, completing all the forms that the legislature requires. The federal budget was just adopted on January 15th, we don't even know what those numbers are yet. So here's excerpts from our budget book in draft form, and I already noticed some mistakes that we need to fix, but, let's see, nine?
Seven.
Seven. Two, three, four, five, six.
More than seven, I think.
Seven, eight.
He's the numbers guy.
That's for me, do I have one here?
No.
And then, so our budget is primarily, so what you'll be looking at momentarily when you get it is a summary, a budget overview commentary that I provide right before, in our budget book, we start laying out our budget numbers, and it just summarizes our major categories. First, our total increase, 59.8 million increase, that's virtually all of it is for the education fund. As you know, the education fund is derived from school budgets that are adopted, and we just send it to them, not a choice we have. That number is determined by an estimate we made in the fall of what school spending will increase by, and it was a very simplistic approach, but we're not good at making forecasts to deal with the future. And if you assume that staffing levels remain constant, which they have for the last several years, and you know that salaries grow, and that benefits grow, then there's an increase that is built in that can't be avoided. We came up with a 3.8% increase, it's a little bit lower than we earlier had projected, because health insurance only is growing 4.5% for FY15. We normally, we earlier had a roughly a 10% increase in there, so we're down to 3.8. We will know more in February. We ask districts to, and it's voluntary, but they're very good about giving, to us, send us very basic budget information on what they will be sending to their voters. So what we ask for are the board-approved budgets that they will be sending to the voters on town meeting day. That gives us our first real glimpse of what we think budgets will come in at. We'll know whether our 3.8 is close or not at that point. And then we also see an $11 million, and I jumped down to my last paragraph, but $11 million increase in special education, based on service plans districts sent to us in the fall, what they expect their costs will be. And those have generally been, on a school-by-school basis, not accurate, but it's, what is that term, when you get a large collection of information, it works out, the middle works out to be pretty accurate?
Mean?
Yeah, in this case, it's been within a few percentage points, fractions of a percentage point, so that will probably be the special ed increase. Our general fund, that funds the department, we say it's level-funded, and you look at the numbers on the top page there, we're actually down $100,000. Love it when level funding is down, but the budget bill that passed this year required the administration to reduce all budgets after the adopted budget, the state-approved budgets, by several million dollars for efficiency gains, which we've been working on for the last, well, since I got here. So we're really getting efficient now, I'm sure, but, so that actually reduces our base, and it was a $58,000 reduction to our base for FY15. And then we're, several of the agencies within the department are funded by charging us fees. The IT folks, DII, Department of Information Innovation, charges us for services they provide, Buildings and General Services charges, employee benefits go up or down. So we get those charges adjusted by the administration. It resulted in a $50,000 net loss to us, so our general fund is actually, our level-funded general fund is down by $100,000, a little more than $100,000. And so the next page is just some pie charts that we put in our budget book every year that just tries to give you a scale of our $1.675 billion budget, and the intro paragraphs to those two pie charts are, haven't been updated yet, and I apologize, I just missed that when I did it. But to show you that our sources of funds, the big, and it doesn't show up here, but if you look closely, when it's in color in the budget book, you can see it, that's the education fund, 9% federal and 1% general fund, or federal and other, there's some special funds. So our sources of revenue, virtually all ed fund, and the expenditure pie chart is below, over 75% goes to school districts to fund their budgets, another 10.4% to school districts for special ed aid, and then we have smaller categorical ed fund grants that comprise the remaining 4%. There are some other grants from other sources, Medicaid, a little general fund that goes out. And so, on the expenditure side, the general fund covers 4 tenths of a percent of our operating budget, and federal and other funds comprise 1.3% of our operating budget. That's just very basic numbers to give you a sense of, it looks like we have a huge budget, virtually none of it is within our control. Sort of like what school boards say. I looked at Sean Marie when I said that, because I thought she'd appreciate that.
But it's true for us, Bill.
Yeah. But it's true for, I'm not saying that. This is recorded, no. And then, if you look at the number pages, this is our summary budget, our budget book provides more detail, but you can see our total personal services budget, our operating budget, all funds. Then we break it down by funding source, general fund, education fund, and there's very little money in our budget that goes to, of the education fund that goes to us. There are operating expenses in there that cover charges we get for the state's accounting system. The education fund has a lot of accounting, so we have to pay the state for the accounting system for that, and the auditor audits the financial statements, a big section of that is education fund. So we get a bill from the auditor for that service, and so the law allows the education fund to go towards those, but nothing more than that. All the rest of it, you can see, are grants to school districts. And then, the back page just covers, there's a small tobacco litigation fund that is level-funded, it got reduced last year, but level-funded this year. And the federal numbers are really squirrely right now, we will have to amend those while we're in committee, we just don't know what they are yet, we haven't heard. So we're waiting to see, I understand, I just saw an email today that provided the budget that the government, the president will be given to sign. I don't believe he's even signed it yet. And then, all the, the US Department of Ed will start sending us our grant allocations. They will change by whatever the budget numbers are, plus the census, every year the Census Bureau adjusts our census numbers, all the states in the country, and our allocations change based on what those census numbers do. Believe it or not, we don't look as poor, we're looking less poor than a lot of other states these days, just because of the way the numbers shift around the country, so it changes how we get allocated. So that's it in a nutshell, folks.
Great, thank you.
I wanted to give you a sense, and more later, or as you ask for it.
Okay, Bill?
This is mostly expenditures, the revenues, when I'm looking at, the personal services going up $1.4 million.
Primarily in the federal funds line. When we budget federal funds, we are budgeting three years worth of federal funds, all grants have a 27-month spending period, there's often carryforward in them. Also, we have our contracts line in here, and I think what some of this fluctuation is, is unknowns about what the new assessment number is going to cost, and we do have a significant pot of money out of federal funds to pay the assessment contracts.
What do we know about the general fund transfer going up, down, sideways, and?
Yeah, that's not part of our budget, but it is part of the education section of the budget bill, and it does go up this year by whatever the 2% or 3% that's prescribed by law.
And you're figuring budgets were going to go up 4.3, or what did you say?
Well, we have 3.8% right now, yeah.
You said staffing, you projected staffing to be equal last year to this year. I seem to remember that there's some foggy requirement that in January there'd be a staffing report, and I'm curious and puzzled by why the staffing numbers remain basically the same.
And all I know at this point is, we are, our teacher staff numbers are in now, that we collected this fall, they're still being cleaned, I think that we have one SU that's not, not one SU, one district that's not in yet, but it shows that they're virtually the same as they were last year. And I think I said this...
It was reported last fall.
Yes, yes, so from fall to fall, about 18,300 total staff is what we're looking at. It was slightly higher than that last year, maybe 18,400 or a little less last year, it's virtually flat. And I probably said this anecdotally, last year too, we are hearing from districts that they are riffing this year in this budget cycle. It hasn't shown up yet in our teacher staff numbers, but we've had several anecdotes where boards are doing some riffing because of population declines. So maybe next year we'll see that.
I would have thought the rift curve would start a couple of years ago.
Yes, and, and, yes, yeah, counterintuitive at this one.
But it may not be a riff, it may not be a riff notice, it may be that they just don't replace retiring teachers.
Attrition.
Wouldn't it be the same, it would be the same?
In fact, you would have, you think you would have fewer staff. In the direct instruction area of secondary and elementary grades, we do see reduction in those staff, but we've seen increases in other areas, in support services.
Teachers going down, but paras and support.
Yeah, and I think paras are fairly flat right now too, but paras have been the largest growth area recently, but they look like they've tailed off too.
Okay, thank you.
Well, when we get that report finished, I'd be happy to bring it and show it to you.
With all the attention being given to school budgets, this is a biggie.
Yep.
So Bill, on that small school support?
Yes.
Is this what's projected, this $158,000 increase? And if the legislators do something to change this small school support, would it be in FY16?
They, I can only guess, if they did change it, they would likely not do it for FY15, you are correct. They would give a little lead time, because by the time they would ever enact a change, budgets will be set. So districts will be counting on this money, and they would wait a year. That's generally how they handle it. This number that you see there is based on a formula, both using enrollment numbers that we now have, and it is dependent on the base education spending amount, which hasn't been fixed yet by the legislature. But we're using the amount as if it were grown according to the statute, which takes it up to $93, $9,382, I think, from $9,151 this year.
And since it isn't our purview, I will say that a $12 million increase total in special ed and state-placed students, compared to absolutely no increase in adult ed and literacy, is really depressing. I mean, we have a lot of adults who need this help, and it's just a comment, because we don't have control over this.
Special ed is growing faster than regular ed, and it is becoming a bigger percentage of the total.
Okay.
I've got another question. If they cut the base education amount, that is a de facto shift to a local property tax.
Here's, there are two scenarios on the table for discussion right now that the Tax Commissioner recommended. One is to raise the base amount by the statutory level, 93, 82, I think. That would require a tax rate increase from 94 to $1.01, but you have to think in terms of percentage change, not pennies on the base that everybody talks about, because the base amount increase offsets some of the tax rate increase. If they do that, if they adopt that scenario, school budgets will go, school taxes will, homestead, the tax rate will go up 4.8% if the district level funds its per pupil spending. If it goes up, if per pupil spending goes up, then it compounds that rate increase. If they choose the other scenario of leaving it 91.51, and only raising the base tax rate to 99 cents, that will result in a 5.3% homestead tax rate increase if a district level funds its per pupil spending. If its per pupil spending goes up, it'll compound that rate increase as well.
That's something that needs to get publicly out there, because schools are being blamed for this, but if they're level funding, and they're looking at a 4.8 to a 5.3% increase in taxes, which is driven upon them, that's kind of important.
Yes, I'm honored to did send something out about that earlier, I don't know how much talk it gets, it gets, these numbers get confusing, because we talk about the tax, homestead tax rate going up 7 cents, well, that's just on the base, it's really a percentage increase you got to look at, and nobody expresses in those terms because they get confused by it all, but that's what we're facing right now. If there were no spending increases across the board, we're still looking at having to raise the taxes a little bit because the grand list, the rate, not the taxes, because the grand list didn't go up, it went down a half a percent. And they've used one-time money this year to prevent raising the tax rate higher, and that's not available next year. So those two things are built in, are increased right there, and then any other changes are on top of that.
Can I just ask a clarifying question for the board? So what could be our role in the education piece, in that PR piece, in getting out, I know even for my school that I work at, the budget's going up 3.02%, but the taxes go up 8%. And I know that's not unique to towns. So do we have a role in not making policy about that, but just trying to explain it to others? And so the education, those budgets don't take a hit, because then they think, well, why, just, you know, we should be cutting things from the school, and they've already cut to keep it at 3%. So could we have a role in that conversation and around the state? And just what, should we have a role, or?
You know, historically, we have not.
Right.
It doesn't mean it's right. I guess I'd have to think about it.
There's nothing that prevents us from doing it.
No.
In fact, I would make the argument that it's probably a responsibility, it's the independent body, blah, blah, blah.
I would ask the question, is it our responsibility or our role, or is it the role of the local boards to educate there? Because it is different everywhere. So I feel like that becomes really incumbent upon those local boards to do their job really well in terms of educating.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly do the statewide information, but I don't know how helpful that is, depending on what's happening and...
It might help local boards, if they're trying to explain it, if the State Board has come out and said that.
We need Steve Dale back, so he can talk to his local boards.
This is the challenging position the state is in, in a state-funded system. The spending amount is controlled by 273 individual boards. It's the state's job to make sure there's enough money to pay that. When the state wants to control its budget, it controls its expenditures. It can't do that here.
Right.
But then it doesn't really, other than the general fund transfer, it doesn't pay it, and it isn't, it isn't the one that pays the penalty in terms of the price of it, it's locally determined, 99.5% of that money is affected by your local tax rate.
They are, in fact, state tax rates, but the rate is determined by your budget, in the new world.
I think you just said what I said.
I do know what you meant, I couldn't help but try to...
So, yeah, maybe we should give it some thought, Krista, but I don't know that there's an easy answer to it. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Before we adjourn here, there's some issues with our March date. I think, Carol, you told me that there's no staff available on March 18th?
Staff is all going to be in DC, CCSSO meeting on 18th of March.
So my proposal is, we change the date of our March meeting till March 25th.
And that gives you more time where, Stephen?
Where will that be, that meeting?
In Appalachia Cola, Florida. That'll be here.
I still won't be back, it's okay.
Any other business to come before this meeting? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Lockwin, seconded by Sean Marie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. It's all good. It's all good.